To the January 30th special meeting of the Glendale City Council, may we have a roll call?
Sure.
Councilmember Zagajanian.
First.
Devine.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
Sananian.
Here.
And Mary Garpetian.
Here. May we have your report, please?
Of course. Agenda for January 30th, 2018, special meeting of City Council was posted on Friday, January 26th, 2018, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Okay, what's next?
First item is Director of Library, Arts and Culture regarding Public Art Master Plan Executive Summary. At 1A is motion to note and file and provide feedback.
Ms. Beers?
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, in November of 2015, the council approved the 2015-17 work plan for the Arts and Culture Commission that resides within our Library, Arts and Culture Department, and appropriated $380,000 to accomplish many activities that were detailed in the work plan, of which one of the areas was to have the development of a public art master plan process. And we are here today to provide you information on that process. And Cindy Cleary, our director, is here to take you through that process. Cindy?
Yeah, I'm here today and very happy to be here today to be able to present the executive summary that outlines, as Ms. Beers said, the public art master plan. The public art master plan came to you, excuse my voice, came to you as a recommendation from the Arts and Culture Commission, and we, after your approval, engaged CARZ, Community Arts Resources, who's known for actually launching Sublevia. They come with a stellar resume. And also Barbara Goldstein, who has a national reputation of developing master plans throughout the country, from Pittsburgh to Palo Alto to Fort Worth. So I'm pleased to introduce you to Barbara Goldstein, who will go through the executive summary.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. Thank you very much for taking the time to meet with us today. As you know, the city of Glendale has a percent for art on private development, which requires that developers either spend 2% to enhance their property with public art or place 1% into the Urban Arts Fund. The Urban Arts Fund has now accumulated approximately $7 million, and it can be used to commission, design, or install, or maintain, public artwork on public property. It can support performing arts, and it can enhance or support the cultural infrastructure or arts facilities that are real property. I'm going to go through a couple of really quick slides on what is meant when we talk about public art, and then I'll go through the recommendations for the Public Art Master Plan. Public art is often thought about as landmarks, something that identifies buildings. So you can think about traditional landmarks, which might have been a hero or a person on a horse, or more modern landmarks like the Gateway Arch in St. Louis, which is the one icon that people always identify with that city. In Denver, they have a huge public artwork that's called "I See What You Mean." It's a blue bear. The idea is the bear coming down from the mountain. And it's such a popular landmark in Denver that you can buy copies of it in any store in the city. In Pittsburgh, there's an iconic artwork that was made out of steel that had been used on the site of a steel plant that's no longer there. This artwork is called "The Workers," and it was created both by the artists and by former steel workers. And at the border of Canada and the United States, this artwork that's called "Non-Sign" was created to mark the entrance from one place to another. Public art can be used to enhance urban space. This is an artwork and a fountain that was created in front of San Jose City Hall. And this is a, it's an artwork that is on the facade of a library's parking structure in Portland. And it's made up of the covers of many books. It's a vinyl wrap, actually. And people from the community in Portland actually selected the books that would be used for this big vinyl mural. So instead of having an ugly concrete parking structure, you have something that's interesting to look at and really tells you what's going on in that building. Public art can engage people. This is a piece that was, is in San Francisco, California, and instead of normal bus benches, this is called domestic seating. And it's a series of chairs that are cast from normal chairs, but they're cast in bronze. So instead of having an ordinary bus bench, there are seats that are in domestic arrangements that provoke people to have conversations and interact with each other. In Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania, in one of the dark alleys, they installed a piece that's called "Cell Phone Disco." It's a piece that is created with LED lights. And if you go into that alley with a cellphone in your pocket, it will automatically trigger activity on that artwork. This is a piece that was done in San Jose in a community center. The people in the community center wanted to see the trees preserved that were there before the community center was built. And the artist designed the playground for kids, repurposing the trees. You can see that there are a lot of elements there that are playful. The bouncy chairs are made out of trees. The pole has a woodpecker with a spring on it that kids can make go by touching it. And public art can also be environmental. Here in Bothell, Washington, at a place that processes water, the effluent tube was made out of recycled bottles. So it's really talking about the reuse of water, but it's, instead of being an ordinary concrete tube, it is made out of glass. And here's another environmental artwork in Pennsylvania. It inscribes the watershed in the plaza. And when it rains, you actually see the watershed fill up with, all the little rivers fill up with the water. It can also be used to enhance construction. Here's a piece that was done in Denver. It is a glass wall, which might have been an ordinary glass wall, only the artist created this pattern of clouds that changes as the light changes outside, made out of many, many little glass tubes. Or here in Columbia City, Washington, where an artist created a sound wall, decorated the sound wall using bicycle reflectors to make up patterns that look like Native American beading. Public art can also use technology. Here's a piece that we did at, oops, I'm sorry. This is a piece that we did at San Jose's airport. It's a data visualization piece that actually, it's suspended glass, and it takes weather patterns from around the world, and it translates them into a pattern that's continuously changing. It's a piece that's over the food court.
Where is that located?
It's in San Jose Airport. And then this next piece shows you a little bit about what public art can do in private development. Now it came up. It wasn't up here before. So this is a sort of very ordinary, as you can see. It's a pretty ordinary apartment building, but the developer decided to do something really interesting on the outside. He commissioned an artist to create a light piece. And this artwork happens to be right on a freeway, like a lot of buildings are here. And the light piece is very dynamic, so that, oh, I don't know what happened. So that when you drive by, you can see the lights changing continuously, and it becomes a kind of gateway to the city, because at night, it's changing all the time, and it kind of signals that there's something interesting happening here. I think we could, can you help me stop that now? I don't know why it came up that way.
Can just let go?
So I'd like to kind of go into what we're doing here. This is the problem with technology. So this is how the plan evolved. We've been meeting since June. We've had many public meetings, neighborhood meetings, focus group meetings, advisory group meetings. We've had a video that's gone on the television station locally and also on Armenian television. We leafletted in all of the power and water bills, and leaflets have also gone out to people and parents of kids in schools. And we also have an interactive website that is called My Glendale Public Art, where people can log in. They can put pins where they would like to see art and write their comments in there and have different conversations about what they would like to see. One of the unique elements of this outreach form is that, as you've probably seen, there are signs at key intersections in Glendale where people can text in from that sign and say what they would like to see in that area, what kind of art they're interested in. When they text in, the pin drops on the interactive website map, and we get a lot of data from that. And this is really, between the meetings and our conversations with all of you and department heads, we've come up with a series of recommendations. The first program recommendation is to really think about public art, the kinds of things that I showed you earlier, as something that can enliven neighborhoods in downtown with both visual arts and cultural offerings. What we're talking about there is things like supporting the city's vision for economic vibrancy in the Maryland Arts and Entertainment District, commissioning projects that are welcoming to Glendale, whether they are permanent artworks or murals at key gateways, and supporting activities, arts activities in neighborhood settings in consultation with neighborhood councils. The second recommendation is that art be planned into all new projects that the city builds, including parks, streets, civic structures. It's really unusual that a city that has a private percent for art does not have a percent for art on its own construction projects. And there's a lot of support for this within the city departments that build things. What we're recommending is that there be an ordinance created that requires that when the city builds a new building, that it includes art in those buildings, that it initiate an annual capital improvement plan that includes art in it, and that artists be included in the design of infrastructure projects like streetscape, so that it helps with initiatives like Street Smart Glendale to slow people down and get them to appreciate the streets and be more interested in walking or riding their bikes. The third recommendation has to do with creating temporary art throughout Glendale's neighborhoods and downtown. This is a way to both test new ideas. It's a way to help to nurture local artistic talent. It's a way to enhance the way that neighborhoods look and feel. Again, we would be looking at engaging community councils, neighborhood councils, and helping to identify where the arts can take place, whether it's a festival, whether it's a temporary artwork, whether it's something that is a pop-up in an empty storefront that can create vibrancy in neighborhoods and help people to come together and enjoy each other's company. The fourth recommendation, as we mentioned earlier, is to encourage developers to include art as a feature in all new projects. This is a project that's going to be going up on Brand Boulevard. It's where the California Pizza Kitchen is. It's a tech-based artwork that also has a musical element to it. The, we are suggesting that you make the percent for art on private development the same as the amount that goes into the trust fund, so that developers are incentivized to put work on their own buildings rather than always putting it into the trust fund. And we're recommending that there be staff support to help the developers to figure out how to do art in public places when they have a building. So not all developers are going to have open spaces at their buildings like this, but they could have other elements where art could be shown. For example, the piece that I showed you where it was on the roof of the building, or the earlier piece where you saw a parking structure that was enhanced by art. And also, as an element of that, we would be looking at creating a guidebook for developers so they know what's possible. The fifth recommendation is to, oh, this is actually the wrong recommendation, I'm sorry. But the recommendation is actually to use the urban art, is to monitor the care and condition of public art in the city. Right now, there are not a huge number of public artworks in the city, but the ones that are there are in need of care. You can't just put something up and hope that it's going to last. If it's bronze, it's going to turn green. It's going to create, it's going to corrode. If it's a tile mosaic like the one on the lower left, it needs to be cleaned from time to time. And there needs to be records kept of what is in the collection. The sixth recommendation has to do with expanding the arts infrastructure, including the Armenian Museum, Space 134, Alex Theater, Brand Library. There are things that can be done to make the arts more accessible through infrastructure. So, for example, the Plaza Series right now is kind of outgrowing its space. There's need for additional seating. Perhaps a different location in Brand Park would work better. There's the possibility of adding a temporary bandshell to Central Park, where they're currently showing movies at night, so that until the Armenian Museum is built, there's another place where people can hear music outdoors. Then there's the whole idea of including art in the design of Space 134 or in the outside space at the Armenian Museum. We have policy recommendations as well, and these are very key. The first one has to do with actually adopting the urban art program so that it reflects the city's vision as a safe and prosperous community that's rich in cultural offerings. This means thinking about things like engaging artists and helping to create a design of public places and supporting the activities that are happening through additional funding. And the second policy recommendation has to do with promoting high-quality, publicly accessible artworks. We would be looking at things there, like how do you fund ongoing activities that are happening through some of the facilities that the city has? The Urban Art Fund is not going to be able to do everything. There's a need to support the organizations that are here. Building a stronger relationship between Library, Arts and Culture and Glendale Arts, so that there's a unified voice that's promoting the arts. And also, expanding programs to actively engage the public in arts activities. That would include things like trying to create an interactive web map so that people could see where art is. They could look at what organizations are creating arts and cultural activities. They could look at their calendars and learn what's going on. One place where people can learn about the arts in Glendale. And then lastly, we have some administrative recommendations. One of them is to clarify the role of the Arts and Culture Commission as the stewards of public art. Right now, the code does not actually specify that the Arts and Cultural Commission is there to review and recommend to you, the policymakers, how art should be created and review work that's happening on private property. As a result, the projects that come through on private property often get to the Arts Commission when they're already pretty far down the line. This is a way to clarify the Commission's role and to create policies and procedures that the Commission can use when they make decisions. And then the last thing is that none of this is going to happen unless it's possible to hire a full-time senior staff person to run the program. There are part-time staff that are involved in the program now. And the, it's not enough staffing to be able to take on the kind of ambitious proposal that we're suggesting. The plan that you're going to get in April, after we develop the final version, will have a lot more detail in it about locations of art and the sequencing of what should happen when. These are the things that are going to happen in the next steps. We have an advisory committee meeting that will be reviewing the executive summary tonight, taking your comments into account. We have a second public meeting that is happening on Thursday night. We had very good attendance at the first one. Over 100 people came. We expect the same number on Thursday. The draft plan will be developed based on their feedback. The Arts and Culture Commission will review that, and so will department heads. And then we will bring a revised draft plan to you for your review and your comment before you adopt it. So I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Okay. Any questions? No questions?
I have a few comments, maybe a couple of questions.
Thank you.
I think what, when we started this process, what I was looking for, when we talked about master art project throughout the city, my understanding was we wanted to bring a different culture into Glendale as well as arts. And that is studying the entire city as to where the public arts places would be. Where is it a good place for Glendale? Not only in downtown area, because what I saw over here, most of the comments that came from people were only in downtown Brand or Maryland or central area. But I don't want to neglect the rest of the city. So my goal was, overall, to have a study done in the city, the entire city, North Glendale, South Glendale, Northwest Glendale, Chevy Chase area, and find out like Adams Hills, Kenneth Village, Maryland, as well as Montrose area, to find out what would work in Glendale. And I think master art to me, I'm not an artist, as you can tell, but I appreciate art. And I collect art. And I think what we need to do is have a plan that speaks of our past, our history of the city, as well as the current situation that we have and the present and the future where we want to go. I think that's what I would like to see in general. As far as the, clarify the Arts and Culture Commission's role as the state's steward of public arts, I think it is clear. I mean, I don't, I don't think it's unclear. I think the commissioners know what their roles are and what have you, and they make recommendations to council, and council makes the decision. One thing we need to look into is street arts. You know, Montrose does that, I mean, in quarterly basis, maybe every six months or so, they have street art, and everybody knows, and they advertise that heavily. And it's a pack. We go all the time. It's a good environment. It's a pleasant environment. The weather is nice. It's safe. So I think that's where I would want to start, basically, to... As far as murals go, I'm not a big fan of murals. Overall, it depends on the type of mural. And until I see it, I don't know if I like it or not. And that's what arts are, right? You know, they say your personal taste has no friend. I mean, just what I would like may, you know, many people may not like. The other thing that you mentioned was our own projects and incorporate art in our own project, which I agree. One was the Passeau Project we had on Brand next to Mona. And we had, my understanding was, the original design was that Clayton Plumbing statue that we have, the faucet that it drips water, it was supposed to drip into a cascading water feature. And it was taken out, and we just put some sort of a landscaping that, to be honest with you, I don't know what that is. But, and the diver was supposed to look into, the diver over the Mona was supposed to be looking into, looking into that water feature. Sorry?
That sounds great.
Right. So I think that's another thing we need to look into. I don't know what the cost would be, but that was the original plan. So I think we need to look at what we started and try to complete those. And public arts, I don't know, when you go to Europe, you see all these, there are arts everywhere, right? So that's public arts to me, when you see a statue that speaks of your past and your history and maybe some people who are here today, and we can have statues like, you know. One other thing is to have a contest, like we did with the boxes, the utility boxes, and locate some areas that we want to have public arts and have a contest and have ideas from artists and have our local artists to display their arts. But as far as, you know, I want to go on the record and say I'm not for changing our charter or our law book, if you will, to change the Commission's authorities or their obligations, if you will.
Okay, thank you. Yeah.
Ms. Devine?
Thank you very much for your report. I have to say, I'm from the Pittsburgh area, and I think I better go back and revisit to try to find these works of art, particularly interested in the steel sculpture. Anyway, this is a good start, I think. I think you have a lot of good information here. My question is, so where do we go from here? How do we accomplish all of this? Do we commission an artist to come in and maybe do the Las Vegas corridor? And is that the next step that you're going to be working on?
What is going to happen is that the draft plan will have very specific bullet points in it that talk about what types of work should be commissioned and when. Part of the whole issue around clarifying the Commission's role is developing a set of procedures that do things like, say, when you are doing a public artwork and you've come up with a location, you need to do things like engage the local stakeholders. You need to do a public request for qualifications or proposals from artists, so that kind of thing. So the final draft will have an implementation plan that will say, "Start with these projects and go on to those projects after year three." It'll go through what to do short-term, midterm, and long-term, so that you have some early projects that are wins, that people can understand and appreciate, and then move on to more complex projects as you move forward.
And will that responsibility lie with, as far as your plan goes?
I won't be doing the commissioning, no.
No, I know. No, but I mean, will that responsibility lie with the Arts and Culture Commission?
It will, which needs to be staffed, because the Commission can't do it on its own. Right now, they're, yeah.
So that piece, that piece of it, I think, as it relates to the hiring of a staff member who can really shepherd this process once it has been completed. And once this comes back to the City Council in
April.
In April and/or May, and let's say you, as a body, give it the final okay. As part of the budget process, what our plan would be is to come before you and request a full-time position, to have the opportunity to really take that plan, the drop-down menu of options that we are going to be given by way of this report, and to have the opportunity to implement pieces of it along with the Arts and Culture Commission. So you will need somebody dedicated to this program. And today, we don't have that.
Right. Would the salary from that, for that position, come from our budget or from the DIF?
The City Attorney's Office is looking at that piece, and we should have an answer, you know, prior to the budget discussion.
I would say, to the extent it's feasible to use it, and you can identify projects on an ongoing basis, it's going to be, that administrative cost is going to be lending itself towards producing these projects, then you can use it. But it's just, it'll be a constant or an annual thing where we are making the findings to use those funds for administrative purposes.
So primarily, what you're suggesting is that this person, this head of the arts would work with the Commission, the Arts Commission, and proceed with the plan, and then probably bring ideas or budgetary items to council so that we could make a decision on those.
Right. You will get a biannual work plan that outlines, "These are the projects that we're going to do in year one. These are the projects that we're going to do in year two. This is the budget for the project. This is how we'll do the artist selection." All of that will go in the annual and biannual work plan.
Thank you.
You're very welcome. Yeah.
Who does that now? I mean, who works with Arts and Culture Commission? Who parks?
No, it's Library.
Cindy does?
Right. So it's the Library, Arts and Culture Department. And we have Cindy Cleary, and we have some part-time hours that are associated with that currently. In the past, we had a full-time, two different full-time employees who were assigned to the Arts and Culture Commission. They, and a piece of their responsibility was the Arts and Culture Commission along with other responsibilities that they had. They have since gone to other cities and have other positions. And currently, we do have pieces of full-time employees who are working on certain things and some part-time hours, but nobody who's holistically dedicated to the arts and to the furtherance of the vision that you are going to set as the council.
Councilmember Zagajanian?
I mean, whoever we have to hire, his or her salary will come from the money that Art and Commission...
The Urban Art Fund.
That is the goal, and that's the plan. We're just, there are certain restrictions on the use of those funds, and so we have to make sure we're not overspending those funds on administrative purposes. So there are legal nuances to it that we have to work out with. So there are legal nuances to it that we have to work out with.
The city's not going to pay for that.
To the extent that we can legally defend it, yes.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Sinan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I do want to echo a lot of the thoughts and concerns that you expressed. Again, I know this is sort of a very raw and really broad concept of where this is all going to go, but we want to make sure these funds are used, A, for the entirety of the city, this is not limited to downtown Glendale, it's not limited to Brand or even Maryland, although those are clearly special, because they sort of showcase our city to outsiders more so than, well, I guess equally for outsiders and city residents. But we do have 15, or 12 or 15 square mile city, and our population is spread out. So to the extent possible, I think public art needs to be truly public, and first and foremost, it needs to serve our public, our own residents, and it's recognized by this council that we lack a lot of public art. That's something our city lacks. We have a lot of great things, public art is not one of those. Name, you know, cities were enumerated, you know, there's so many examples that you can, just walking down a street is really a cultural experience in terms of just seeing art, and we don't have much of that. You know, the whole avant-garde art thing is really nice and good, sometimes the avant-garde becomes passe over time. Classical art should be considered too, because it doesn't become passe, it's, it's good at any time. And so we shouldn't concentrate on one type of art, but really look at art in its broadest In terms of the, yeah, the murals, again, not me, I agree with you, you know, some murals are great, some aren't, I don't want to, I don't want Glendale to sort of become one big canvas for murals. I hope we concentrate on sculptures and statues, we have very few of those. I think Brand Boulevard has maybe a couple, but that's about it, and that's a shame, too bad. But in terms of, there was a recommendation that when city commissions buildings and such, that we have, we sort of impose on ourselves the obligation to create art, public art, and that's a great idea, except that we barely ever build anything new. I mean, we, there's a lot of things that get built in the city, but we're not building new buildings that often, I mean, sometimes, but very seldom. So that in of itself won't really lend itself to expanding the public art space in Glendale. So we should concentrate on other, more creative ways of placing that art, or getting others to place the art. So, that's it, Mr. Mayor.
No, I appreciate the work of the working group and Barbara. That was quick, huh? They weren't too quick when they were blasting our ears with the intro music, but my microphone goes off for a few seconds and they're all over it.
I can hear you, my microphone's on or not.
Thanks to Barbara and the working group for putting this together. It's a broad roadmap, and I, my only thoughts are that I think art does play an important role. It's an important role in the development of the city, in creating our psyche and our image. So I want to make sure that the city council stays very much in the loop, and that we not just delegate it to the Arts and Culture Commission. Certainly, we appreciate their input and their advice, but when it comes to the actual selection and location and mode, motif, and all those other things, I think as council we should be, be at that table as it starts to be formulated.
If I can just add something that I want to make sure that I am of that same school of thought, I want to be involved every step of the way when it comes to actually, when we actually get to the art of it. So I agree with you and Mr. Mayor as well.
Counselor Devine?
And I also wanted to add that I hope that you will be promoting and supporting local artists in this move forward with the art.
And I just want to go on record and say that, I think the projects that city has done in the past, they implemented the public arts in it. The police department has a really nice public arts. Our building here, the one that I really liked and I fought really hard to bring it back, was the fountain, the water feature that we have in the middle, is part of the architectural motif of the, or design of the, this building. And city had done its share, and our resources are limited as well. And you mentioned CPK, the entire plaza over there, to me, it looks like a piece of art, you know, with the water feature, with the seating areas, and the restaurants incorporated in there. It was larger, but I think they
Much larger.
It was much larger, but due to the drought, we, they cut it in half, I believe. And also, you mentioned the community meetings, can you tell me how many community meetings we had, and how many people attended those meetings?
I'm going to defer to Regina on this one. We've had, we have the statistics, and it's, it's pretty impressive, actually.
This is Regina Alkazar from Cars. Yeah. Regina Alkazar with Community Arts Resources. So Cars was in charge of the outreach portion, public engagement. So we did a number of things throughout the whole entire city. We did a number of focus groups, Barbara mentioned a few, we did vinyl banners at the intersection at GCC, the bridge, so, you know, the thoroughfare that goes back and forth, it was in Armenian and English. We had 10 community events and organization, all meetings, so we attended them and talked about our efforts with the Glendale Public Art Master Plan. Throughout the city, we had 52 Koroplas engagement signs in Armenian, Spanish, and English. That was also throughout the city and key locations, people were able to text in their responses to a question such as, what kind of public art would you like to see here? We had over maybe 150 text messages within the past two months. Let's see, we had, again, over 100 people attend our October 18th first public meeting. We have about 250 registered accounts on the Public Art Master Plan website. So the website was a very important way for us to engage with a large number of the city. We got to reach people that, you know, couldn't attend our meetings, very diverse population, and they're very much able to look at other people's comments, chime in, respond to them. So if you have, you know, a minute, I very much encourage you guys to check out the website. It's very exciting to see a lot of the ideas and things coming from the community. People are very excited about what's going to happen with this, with this plan. Let's see, so we had GTV6, we had help from them, we did, you know, a short video that had a lot of engagement. We distributed buck slips to 2,500 buck slips throughout the city as well, at libraries, civic offices, businesses. We had 10,000 flyers go out to GUSD students. We had 82,000 bill inserts into utility bill mailings. We were featured in the Glendale news press, once in October, and we actually just did again recently, maybe like three days ago, to promote our meeting on Thursday. And Barbara was featured in Armenian TV as well. And again, we have our meeting on Thursday at the library on February 1st.
Last Thursday?
No, this
Oh, this coming Thursday, okay.
And it's our last public meeting that we'll be talking about some of the things that
So you had one public meeting, and there were 100 people there?
Over 100 people there, yes.
100 people. So you had only one public meeting?
And we also had, oh, yeah, sorry. We also had, with Siklavia, that was actually our first big event that we did some outreach, just kind of launched our project. With that, we had maybe about like 200, 300 people engaged with our booth at Siklavia. But again, all of this added up, I'd say it's probably in the thousands of how many people we've engaged.
And how many people are in the advisory group?
We have about 15 people in the advisory group, and all of them are very key stakeholders in the community. A lot of them related it to the arts, nonprofit organizations in the community.
Thank you. So this is an open file, right? Thank you. Okay. Do we need a
Motion to an open file.
So moved.
Second.
We have a roll call? Counselors Agajanian?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Ajarian?
Yes.
Sinanian?
Yes.
And Mary Garpetin?
Yes. What's next, please?
Motion to adjourn.
We are adjourned. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Second.